I want to call this meeting to order, the Board of Trustees for St. Petersburg College. If you all please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Indication today will be given by Trustee Stone Cypher.
Lord, we thank you for bringing us together today. We pray first and foremost for our new graduates that are entering into a new phase of their lives. We ask that you bless them and you be with them and that you give them the confidence to move forward in their new careers and their new jobs with whatever is next for them in this life. We thank you so much for the ability to give back to these students, to help those in our community. We ask for your blessings upon the faculty, the staff, the administrators here, Lord. We thank you so much for what St. Petersburg College means to Pinellas County. And we ask that in this time of change, as we move from one leader to a new leader, for your discernment in choosing what's best for this college going forward. We thank you and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're excited today to welcome a new trustee. And so we now have a full contingent. It just doesn't look like it today because Mr. Gibbons isn't here, but he'll join us in about 20 minutes. I'd like to introduce Bridget Bello, who resides in Seminole. She's president and publisher of the Tampa Bay Business Journal, and she became the first woman publisher of the newspaper's 25-year history. Previously, she was director of advertising for the Business Journal in Tallahassee. She's a Gator grad. She serves this community in many sundry functions. She's a great member of this community, contributor. She's previously been a board member for the trustees of St. Petersburg College back in 2013 through 15. We are very excited to have her. She's already jumped in the deep end headfirst. She's been through a couple of interviews for the presidential candidates. It's an exciting time in the history of this college, in the history of this board, in making some pretty tough decisions, and we're glad to have somebody of her caliber to contribute. And certainly with three relative newbies over on this side, it's nice to have somebody with her vast experience. Bridget, welcome. We thank you. She'd like to say a couple of words.
You never warned me.
I know.
It feels like I never left. This is where I always sat, right? Now, I had the opportunity to look at several different boards, and all I begged for was to come back to St. Petersburg College. I absolutely love being a part of this community and being, especially now, a part of driving where we're going in the future. And I appreciate you welcoming me back. And it's been an incredible experience just coming back, feeling like you guys missed me as much as I missed you. So glad to be back, and I have the date on my calendar this time of when I have to reapply so I don't get kicked off again. So thanks for having me.
Thank you. Also like to welcome a new Dean of Natural Sciences and Engineering, Dr. Natavia Middleton.
Good morning. [applause]. The Board and Dr. Law. It is my pleasure to introduce the new dean, Dr. Nativia Middleton. She has a bachelor's degree in biology from the University of South Carolina and a doctorate in basic medical sciences from the University of South Alabama. She has served in several positions in higher education. She's been a biological science instructor. She's been a principal investigator for a National Science Foundation grant. She's also served as an interim dean of arts and science and a program coordinator. She joined St. Petersburg College in 2015 as the academic chair of natural science at our downtown Midtown campus, was then appointed when Dean Chapin retired in September of 2016 as the interim dean. And it is our recommendation that we now make her the full-time natural science dean. Nativia.
Good morning. [applause]. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm very grateful to be working with such great professionals here at the college.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Welcome. Let's have a presentation from the St. Petersburg College Model United Nations Distinguished Delegation Award. As they make their way forward. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. First off, we all want to say thank you for all the support that the Board of Trustees, especially anyone else in this room that has heard of Model United Nations. For those that do not know, Model United Nations is basically a group of diverse students from all around the world that come to New York or essentially can also go to DC in international trips to represent a country within a committee, for example, the Security Council, the General Assembly, and they also address various issues regarding peace and security or any other topics that are essential to today's time. Throughout these experiences, a lot of students, they haven't, for a lot of them, for a lot of students, it's their first time publicly speaking, first time writing resolution papers. So it's a really amazing learning experience, and we thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Honorable Board of Trustees and distinguished guests. My name is Rebecca Sauer, and I'm also one of the head delegates for the SBC Model United Nations team. I've served on the team for two years, and it's just been an amazing experience, learning about international affairs and engaging in diplomacy and learning about all these international issues and being such a part of a great diverse team. You know, we have people from all different backgrounds and all different ages. We have a lot of early college students, so it's just a pleasure for your support for the team. We're just so gracious, and we're just overwhelmed with the support that you give for the team here. Without further ado, we did receive three awards this time at New York. We received two of the highest awards, which is a position paper award, and the General Assembly Second Committee awarded to Laura Luke and Edgar Garcia, and then on the United Nations Permanent Forum on Indigenous Issues to Rebecca Sauer and Joshua Clever. And then we also had the honor and privilege of getting a distinguished delegation award, which is the second highest honor you can receive, which is an amazing honor because we compete with thousands of college students around the nation, not even around the nation, but around the world. And so we're just really proud of the team.
Great. Thank you. Before you leave, and as you come up and introduce yourselves, tell us where you are in your studies. If you graduated, if you're going to stay with us, if you're going off to further your education?
I'm good. I can't get it.
So I am graduating in the fall with my Bachelor in Science for International Business. So I'll be finishing my bachelor's.
Super. Thank you.
My name is Trigana Mitrik, and I'm currently planning on graduating by next spring or summer, I believe. I am seeking a degree in associate science in the music industry and recording arts degree, and also an AA in the transfer degree. As much as I love music, I love the United Nations and politics, so I plan on transferring to get a political science degree.
Nice. Thank you. Don't be shy. Come on up. You're the UN.
Hi, my name is Martha Kamara, and I actually just graduated May 13th. And I'm in early, well, I was in early college, so I'm also graduating May 17th from Palm Harbor with my high school diploma.
Wow, nice.
But I am staying in the fall just to take a few classes, but I got into USF for the spring, and I'd like to study international relations or international studies.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I'm Bonwara Beatrice Kamara. She's my little sister. I did early college as well when I was in high school, and I went to Palm Harbor, but then I transferred to the University of South Florida where I graduated with a degree in health sciences and biological science concentration, as well as global communicable diseases. And then I'm back at SBC just like taking a few classes to apply to grad school.
Great. Thank you. Super.
My name is Terbina Bangova. I am an engineering student. I'm only doing the undergrad, the lower division portion here, and then I'll be transferring most likely to a Florida university. I'm interested in bioengineering specifically, and I was really excited about the Model United Nations because I felt it was important for a person like me not to get too one-trap mind in this degree. And I want to make sure I'm aware of global issues because they will inform my choices in the career that I'm pursuing.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Josh Clever, and I'm in the Public Policy Administration degree program, and I'll be graduating in the fall.
Great. Thanks.
My name is Savannah Stranlough. I just graduated this past weekend with my AA, and I'll be continuing in the fall here at SBC for my bachelor's in elementary education, and then eventually I'll be pursuing my doctorate as well. But I really am able to take all of the stuff that I learned in Model UN and even apply it to my classroom when I do receive my degree as an elementary school teacher.
Fantastic. Is that everybody? Oh?
I believe that's everyone. And also would like to mention that four out of the total of our team, they were selected to staff within the official Model United Nations team, and they were able to chair, be also chair repertoire hybrid, as well as repertoire. Me, Becca, Josh, and Chris, who is not here today, was fortunate enough to do so. And I've actually had someone walk up to say, oh, what school are you from? And they've actually spoken to, I believe, two others of us, and they're like, oh, SPC. Must be a really great school, right? I was like, yeah, kinda. So without further ado, we want to keep this short and sweet. I would like to present the position paper awards and the distinguished delegation awards to Dr. Law and the Board of Trustees.
Great. [applause].
We'd also like to thank our advisors. They've been such an improvement to the team as well.
Please, please do that. Please do that.
Thank you, President Law and Board of Trustees, for your support of the Model United Nations program. We deeply appreciate the opportunity that you provide for our students to travel to conferences in the following spring term. I'm Roy Slater. I teach political science classes, and I'm one of the faculty advisors for the Model Union program, along with Dr. Douglas Rivera, academic chair of social behavioral sciences Seminole campus, and of course, Dr. Smiley, dean of social behavioral sciences. We thank you.
Thank you. Great. Come on up.
Let's make two lines. How about some of the shorter folks step to the front? Okay. There you go. That's good, right there. Right here, right here. We actually got a full board now, so it's a little harder to see the picture. Fantastic. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We would also like to recognize Dr. Tom Furlong, partner with the court, chief reporter of the Model United Nations program. Dr. Furlong, I know this is a good offer.
Mr. Chair.
He actually traveled with us last year to New York, and we enjoyed his company in New York with the Model Union team. And we thank the Board and President for your support of the program. Thank you.
Wait, Dr. Slade, y'all don't go nowhere. Mr. Chair, Mr. President, thank you so much. This is yet another good program that Professor Slater is a part of, and every year he comes back with some awards with the Model UN. And we, I think one year we won the whole thing. Is that, am I right?
recognition. Yeah.
This is a good group here.
Well, that's okay. That's okay. This group does an outstanding job, and I just want you all to know, thank you for representing St. Petersburg College in such a major way. This is a, this is a big deal. You get to go and represent us. You know, we praise athletes, we praise all these other folks that do all these other things at St. Petersburg College, but these young people are out representing us internationally and competing and doing a phenomenal job. So thank you, Dean Smiley, as usual, great job. Thank you. And of course, Dr. Furlong, I like to call him the dean of the entire state of education because he does so much. But thanks, Dr. Furlong. Thank you, Dr. Smiley, and especially to the students. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Let's see. Dr. Law?
Nope.
Not here? Okay. Board comments, I'll start. We had a great graduation ceremony, went off without a hitch. It was Dr. Law's final graduation ceremony. I'm not going to ask him if he remembered the name of the last student that he shook hands with, but it just, the entire ceremony was, I always get a little choked up when I see the enthusiasm and the families, the parents, the loved ones, the significant others that know the significant achievement of these fine young people and old people alike walking, getting a degree was fantastic. The Friday before, I had the opportunity to attend the graduation of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School. Again, incredible ceremony. It's just, it's fascinating to me that these young people can receive a high school diploma on a Friday, and then the following Saturday receive an AA degree. It just puts them on a tremendous course, and St. Petersburg College is well-regarded in that. So I couldn't have been happier, Dr. Law. Thank you for all that you do and the accomplishments through graduation, and our success rate is incredible. Dr. Middleton, welcome. As dean, we certainly have high expectations for you, and we know that you will do a tremendous job. Board comments, we will start with trustee Cole.
Thank you, Chairman Foster. I wanted to echo the chairman's comments about graduation. Obviously, I've only been on the board now for about six weeks, but it's such an exciting time to be here with both the interviews that we're doing for Dr. Law's successor, but then to be at graduation on Saturday gave such a wonderful visual and tangible reason why we do what we do and why you all do what you do. And thank you to each of you who are here for the role that you played in each of the students' lives, and thank you for the opportunity to be there and hand out the diplomas on Saturday. It was truly a wonderful experience.
I unfortunately missed graduation on Saturday. I was in the Keys for a wedding, so I was doing some island living. But I did get a chance a few weeks ago to go visit and finally tour formerly the Health Education Center in Pinellas Park. Dr. Carver was nice enough to take some time out of his schedule to show me around and show me everything that's going on at that campus. And again, I've said this a couple of different times, as I've gone to different places within the St. Petersburg College geography, it's always impressive to see what each campus has going on and the specific niche that they fill in these certain places. And the Health Education Center was no change in that. It was shocking, actually, to see how much they can fit into that building with different programs and the efficiency with which they run. It was a buzz of activity the day I was there because everyone was getting ready for finals, and there were students moving this way, students moving that way. But it's encouraging, again, to see these, all these different programs in one county with one college. And thank you to Dr. Carver for taking the time. What an amazing place the Health Education Center is.
Thank you. Trustee Bello, any comments?
Mr. Chair, thank you so much. I do, I have a couple of things, actually, which I'm sure you knew that. I'd like to echo, number one, about the graduation. It was, it was a very good one. I think we graduated 1,200 students, right, Dr. Law? Amazing. And I don't understand where the legislature gets off saying we're not doing our number one priority, which is AAs. We graduated double the AAs than we did in bachelor's degrees, so we're on the right track. And then, you know, to the Board of Trustees, I say this, I guess, once a year, so I'm gonna say it now, is, you know, we are doing the two most important things that we do. We're doing them right now. We did them. Graduation and selecting, making sure we have a competent leader. So this is a very, 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 very tough time for us, but just hang in there, and I think we have a more than capable group here of making sure we make, not only come to graduation, but making the right decision in terms of the president. Let me just say that. To Dr. Law, I hate that it's your last graduation. I'm not going to say too much because I don't want you to get teary-eyed. I don't want to get teary-eyed. But I would just say, you know, you find out who your friends are in a pressure cooker. And I've been in a lot of pressure cookers with you, and let me tell you, I'd like to be, I'd stay in one with you. He does not waver, and when he's right, he sticks where he is, where he should be on the issue. And the other thing is, you know, there are very few people that, when they tell me something and they say, trust me, it ends up like they said, it's supposed to end up like they tell you. And when he tells you it's going to end up a certain way, it does end up that way. He's, you can, we have a very competent leader. Thank you for your leadership for the past five, five years here at the college. It has been a joy to work with you. And then the last two things are, oh, to Dean Middleton, congratulations. Thank you for serving and stepping up. We appreciate that. And to Ann Cooper, Dr. Cooper, thank you for the selection. I will bring up that, Dr. Law, I would like to try to do two things very quickly because I, I got like 600 emails from the sign language interpretation folks, and I know they're here. So I would like to figure out, and I talked to Dr. Cooper very briefly about this on Saturday, figure out how we can fix whatever's broken. I also got a call from Congressman Bill Arakis about it, fixing the program and seeing if there's some way that we can extend our program to be a bachelor's program. I know what we're up against, but can we continue to just have discussions internally and with the folks that are dealing with the sign language interpreter? It's such a big impact to the county. I realized that there were a lot of deaf people, deaf people within the county because I actually sat on the board of Blossom School for the Deaf and the Blind here, right around the corner here. I did not realize so many people were affected, and you have to think about the ancillary people that are, that are affected in terms of families and other people and being able to communicate. And I think we've had one of the better programs. So if we could, Dr. Law, figure out how to just have a discussion about where we go from here. I know that we have figured out how not to, the people that are in the program, how they wouldn't be damaged by our program. But maybe, it's maybe it's something we need to put on our legislative agenda for next year, if that's, if it's possible. I know what we're up against in the legislature. I know what we're up against. Trust me, I understand that. And then finally, Mr. Chair and Board members, I would ask that we consider having a Veterans Affairs Committee, Advisory Committee for the college-wide. We have so many veterans that go to school here that I'd like to see us put a committee together and listen to what the veterans need from the board and the president, and they can meet with the president on a regular basis and say, here's what we're feeling, here's what we're thinking. I don't want to add one more layer, but we serve more veterans here at St. Petersburg College than the whole USF system. And if we're going to have that kind of impact on veterans' lives, I'd really like us to consider having a Veterans Affairs Committee or Advisory Committee that would have a meeting with the president and then also on a quarterly basis, but also on a quarterly basis, come before the board and talk about things we're getting right and things are getting wrong. So I think we do a very good job. I think Jeff and his staff and team do a very good job of that, but I'd just like you all to consider that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. I like that idea, and we can put that on next month's agenda. As far as the Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee for consideration, I will task Dr. Law. I know he has nothing else to do.
Between jobs here.
So.
Between jobs.
So we'll get an idea of what something like that will look like. Certainly, Mr. Gibbons, your input would be extremely valuable. As far as the Sign Language Interpreter Program, we have some speakers, and there will be a presentation today. And they're actually on the agenda, under item 10, unagended items.
I knew they would be.
Unagended items are now on the agenda, so that's when, that's when they will go.
Mr. Chair, just to add to that, I know they're on the agenda, but I, in the past, I would just tell you that Dr. Law, when we usually give him these kinds of items, they usually come out with a good resolution. So that's why I brought it up in my, in my talking points, just so that he can know that he has my full support in figuring it out.
Great. Thank you. And you mentioned you didn't want a tear in his eye. When I came in this morning, Dr. Law had a tear in his eye, and I asked him what it was for, and he spent all week on the budget. So.
No, he was bawling. He wasn't.
So, Dr. Law, comments, please.
I will say just a few quick words. By the numbers, we had 1,151 students walk across the stage Saturday. Proud to say we did it all in two hours. Once we start calling, we don't stop, except for the, those students who need a little extra time to make it to the front. We had, we had one or two very moving students this time. Congratulations to Dr. Williams and her staff putting that together. I, trust me, I do not do anything except show up at the graduation. Secondly, I have, we've been notified that we are the recipients of the Interior Design Excellence Award for Education category for the design and the Midtown Center. So that's a professional group, and Vivian De Rossi and Charm Catlin. Mr. Chairman, yesterday evening, I had occasion to go to the FAST Conference. FAST is a community action group that.
Faith and Action.
Faith and Action, standing together. They, they're good friends. They're tough to deal with sometimes. They, they have a very pronounced agenda. They have been great partners, and they took time to, to give a certificate to recognize. We have done more than 6,000 certificates working with them and with others, 275 specific training initiatives that we did. They were very appreciative of all the work we've done. So, so thank you for your support of that. And then lastly, let me just indicate, today we have the Leadership St. Pete College Group with us today. Would they stand if they are here? There they go. It's quite a crowd. Okay. That, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public to speak on items not related to the SLIP program? There being none, we will move for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Seminole.
Second. Mr. Chair.
Oh, in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Monthly reports. Mr. Wang.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to express my regret at missing graduation. I think it's only the second one I've missed in 40 years. I really enjoy graduation, and it's a wonderful event. I, I was with my wife on her birthday, and we went to St. Martin's on a cruise, and that cruise earned me the first black eye in my life. I fell down in a pothole in St. Martin's, had a pretty hard fall, and fortunately, it was a nurse from Manchester, England, that was standing there watching it. She came over and gave me emergency-type work, but I've got the black eye to show for it, so.
Good morning. I have no report this month.
Great. Dr. Merkanante, where are you? Here he comes. SGO report?
Yes. Good morning, Dr. Law, Mr. Chair, board members. On behalf of the faculty, I'd like to welcome trustee Cole to the board, and to welcome back trustee Bello. We are honored to have you as board members. I'd like to share three items of interest. First, on the topic of full-time faculty hiring. For a long time, the Faculty Senate has championed the idea of increasing full-time faculty. At any college, the full-time At any college, the full-time faculty function as the lifeblood of the academic side of the house. During Dr. Law's tenure, and with the support of Dr. Cooper and the BOT, we have made impressive gains. About seven years ago, we had about 309 full-time faculty members. Currently, we have over 370, an increase of about 60 full-time faculty members. While faculty are mindful that our budget is tight, we are hoping that the gains we have made will not slip away. SPC continues to lag behind the state college system average by about 7% for the percentage of full-time faculty versus part-time faculty. According to data from the 2016 Factbook of the Florida Communication or College System, part-time faculty make up 72.6% of all faculty across the 28 state colleges. Data from SPC's 2015-16 Factbook has SPC at 79.48%, about 7% behind the state average. Again, we have made progress in this area. Back in 2011, we were at over 82% part-time faculty. Now, we're just around 80%, just below. My hope is that faculty can work with administration to at least reach the state average in this area. Uh, secondly, I'm pleased to report that we've made some progress in the area of faculty deans collaborating on course scheduling. Last fall, Faculty Senate put forth the recommendation that deans and faculty work together to create the best course schedule for our students. While some academic departments are moving in the right direction, we still have a ways to go with other departments. Our hope is that in the future, faculty and deans from all departments can work together more closely in identifying the needs of our students, particularly during key registration times. Our downward trend in enrollment need not be accepted as inevitable. We can do better, and faculty continue to encourage open dialogue on this issue, so that our students will be offered the best schedule possible. Finally, as we move closer to transitioning to a new president, faculty are hoping that many of the gains made over recent years will continue. In my estimation, Dr. Law's legacy centers on two key virtues shared with the Faculty Senate: transparency and collaboration. So much of what was outside of the sunshine before Dr. Law arrived is now in full public view. So many of the decisions that were decided without collaboration are now part of a shared process. My hope is that the BOT and the new president will ensure that this legacy continues. I would be remiss if I did not point out that we still have a ways to go in making transparency and collaboration the standard operating procedure across our college. This morning, you will hear the concerns of faculty in the Sign Language AS degree program. Regardless of where one might stand on the specific substantive issues, one fact is clear: faculty first learned about the demise of their own workforce degree program by stumbling on a college webpage announcement. Even the notes from the recent March 30th Sign Language Advisory Board gave no indication of this surprise change. At the very least, there are some procedural issues that need attention. The problem is not isolated to the sign language topic. We are struggling with a similar problem with the lack of transparency and collaboration in the honors program. When the honors advisory committee learned of a behind-the-scenes plan to require students to earn five additional credits for their certificate and degree, the advisory council voted unanimously against this. Still, the change remains. Now, our students have an additional hurdle to complete a certificate or a degree. Members of the same advisory council were again surprised when another non-transparent plan emerged to change two separate honors credit courses into non-credit courses and to have an administrator teach the non-credit courses. Again, why the secrecy? If any department is going to turn credit courses into non-credit courses, why shouldn't faculty be involved in the discussion from the start? I'm still unclear on whether this change is in line with the SPC curriculum and instruction manual, or even with SAC's regulations for making substantial changes in academic programs. SAC's Standard 3.4.10 states that an institution should place, quote, "primary responsibility for the content, quality, and effectiveness of its curriculum with its faculty. The route for curriculum approval is typically through processes controlled by faculty," unquote. Those are the exact words from our accreditation board. I am disappointed that faculty were largely left out of the loop on these important curriculum decisions. My purpose in sharing these examples is to ask respectfully for your support in continuing the legacy of transparency and collaboration that Faculty Senate and Dr. Law have embraced. In many cases, we do well in this area. However, in several recent cases, I fear that we have turned the clock back about eight years. We need not be at odds with one another, nor do we have to conduct our business behind closed doors. We are at our best as a college when we are transparent and collaborative. My hope is that during our transition, we can agree to uphold these values and to encourage open dialogue among all members of the SPC community. I thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Gibbons?
I don't have any questions on this, but I do have some comments. Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Any questions? Comment?
Well, if that was a commercial for transparency, I don't want ever him to do my commercial ever do for me. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I would ask that, um, would you please, um, put on the agenda in the next two months, if we could? I hear what Dr. Mercantante is saying, and I wholeheartedly agree. I think Dr. Law brought a lot of transparency to the college. But I would like to see the average hours and, and class time and office hours of every faculty and the average salary, Dr. Law. I'd like to get an update on that. And then, what days of the week that we have the most classes on? 'Cause if I remember when Governor Bush first appointed me to this board, some 13 years ago, 14 years ago, I would tell you that one of his pet peeves was that we don't teach classes, our classrooms are empty on Friday. And I wanna know, uh, in, in transparency, in the, in the, in the order of transparency, I wanna know, how many hours does faculty, average hours faculty teach? How many hours faculty, um, are actually in office hours? And then the average salary of faculty? I just wanna, if we're gonna start this discussion, I'd like to have the discussion where I have all the data that I need to be able to make a competent decision, and what days we teach our classes on. 'Cause I've been on the campus on a Friday, and I, I could probably hit a faculty member, um, on maybe 66th Street, but not on the campus, right? But I wanna know. I wanna have the real data, and I wanna be able to break it down. So, Mr. Chair, if we could get all of the, the information related to our faculty, what they're being paid, and any other analytics that I'm gonna need to make a competent decision about, um, about faculty and, and moving forward. I, I think, and, and I think that's important for the board, because we just had this thing with the union, right? I wanna know where, who, and what, I, I asked them to come, Dr. Law, I think I did, I don't know if I could've been any clearer, right? I said, "If you want a union, come tell me why you want a union, because I think that this board, you know, Bridgette was on here before, this board, along with the other boards, have been very supportive of faculty." So I'm letting the union thing go, but now I want the data. I wanna know what, who's here, who, how much they're being paid, how many hours they work, and then I also wanna know what are the problems so we can move forward, right, Dr. Law? I mean, I think that's fair, that I think the board needs to have all the analytics, all the data related to faculty, so that we can make good decisions moving forward. Without that, then we're just, you know, shooting fish in a barrel. I mean, we don't know anything about anything. So I think the board needs to get some data related to how many, how many hours these people, the, the faculty actually spend, um, doing certain things, and then we, um, as business people can sit down and say, "Oh, well, maybe we need to increase this or decrease that," and, and move it forward. So in transparency, that's where I, I would like to go. I'd like more data about what, what's going on with the faculty.
Sure, I agree. Anything else?
We can do that. So, on our next agenda, um, we'll receive that data in our board packet, and, um, we'll put it under Strategic Focus and Planning. Uh, we'll have an agended item, we'll call it Transparency Report for...
Perfect.
Uh, want to be a better word. Dr. Mercantante, the, uh, couple of things that, that you said that I think all five of us will agree upon, that, that we will not concede that decreased enrollment is inevitable. None of us are gonna concede that. And I'll also speak for the board when, uh, when you say that we, we strongly desire transparency. Uh, some of the, uh, items you said, uh, uh, we will discuss at our next meeting. I would like to, uh, if you have a transcript of, of what you wrote...
Sure.
Uh, I'd like to get a copy of that for all of us. Uh, don't send it to my St. Pete College email address. I don't even know how to access that. But Deborah knows how to find me, so, um, if I could get, if we could all get a copy of that, so we can, uh, review your comments, that would be appreciated.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Along the same lines as, um, Mr. Gibbons, one of the things we're going to be doing at our next trustees meeting is obviously looking at the budget, and this has a significant impact in the budget with the cuts that we've seen, and so the numbers with respect to the adjunct and part-time professors versus full-time professors included in Mr. Gibbons' request, could we get, not just time, I'm looking at money, too, the numbers, the salary, salaries, benefits, the whole package?
Great.
Please, thank you.
Yep, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Career Service Employee Council, Ms. Trimble. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. My name is Jean Trimble, and I represent over 600, uh, Career Service Employee, employees as, uh, Chair of the Career Service Employee Council. Oops.
Go the other way.
Sorry about that. I want to, as, as the fiscal year comes to a close, I would like to share some of the accomplishments over the last several months. The Retire Emeritus Celebration was held April 11th, 2017. This honors employees who have made significant contributions to the college mission and have worked for the college for at least the past 10 years, and have been retired for at least one year. This year, we honored six retirees, and 70 were in attendance. In alphabetical order, the retirees we honored were Carol Baragona, Lolita Brown, Larry Burton, Kathy Federico, Judith Frock, and Gail McLune, and I want to congratulate them once again. As I reported earlier, we've been working on updates to our SharePoint site, and the homepage is up to date with question ID survey link prominently at the top of the page. Uh, this is our SharePoint site. Uh, the new executive team survey review link to the left provides access to the submitted questions and the executive team's answers to these questions. And the Titan Award link is also new and is populated with information about the award and who is eligible for this reward. The Employee Growth and Success Initiative update. Every career service employee has a growth plan in the system, with the exception of 14 employees who were hired late in 2016 or in 2017. The closeout of the 2016-2017 growth plans will be June 30th, and new plans will open on July 10th. The system will now include a button for the employee to alert their supervisor when the growth plan has been input or updated and is ready for discussion. Separate comment boxes have been included for employee and supervisor. And lastly, the section for supervisor, for the supervisor to document specific expectations that is not in the job description. In conclusion, the employee appreciation luncheons are now in progress. There are eight luncheons, each held at a different campus this month. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to Students' Success and Achievement Board of College System Data Dashboard. Dr. Coraggio.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair.
Members of the board, Dr. Law. I'm so excited to see a full board, first time. Not just from a SAC's perspective, I'm also excited to see who the board members that we have in place. So, welcome, Ms. Cole, Ms. Bello, welcome back. Um, I came here this morning, 'cause I wanted to present a little bit about some data information. You've heard a lot about some of the legislation discussion that's occurred over the last few months. This is a new dashboard that looks at data, a little bit different than even the performance metrics that we shared. Some of those are still in discussion, and we'll bring those back at a later date. But this was a, a, I'll call a beta dashboard that was shared by the, um, Florida College System, which I guess now is the Community College System, um, that was presented recently at the Chancellor's Best Practice Summit. So, this is actually the dashboard for St. Petersburg College, and I apologize, it's a little small, I'm gonna move through that section by section, so we can all get it in more detail. Uh, one of these was actually provided, uh, in a hard copy, they eventually wanted to do an online version, but in a hard copy at the Chancellor's Best Practice Summit, along with one for the overall system. So I'm gonna go ahead and move through those section by section. There's actually four areas, uh, in which the collegeers are evaluated. Uh, what I've done to help with some of the comparisons is you'll see in a red font, and, and underlined, is actually the comparison from the system perspective, so that's gonna be the state information. So this first area is on affordability. Uh, what we're gonna see is there's actually three measures to each area. This very, very first metric is the yearly change in tuition and fees. Uh, we, what you can see there in the top red line is actually the national average. Uh, that's an about 2.5% change over the last, uh, couple of years that are indicated. Uh, then you'll see our college there in blue, and the Florida College System in yellow. Uh, now, as many of the board members know, there's been no change in our tuition or fees over the last couple of years, so we're actually at zero, uh, for that indicator. Uh, system-wide, there's been a change about a quarter percent average across the system. The next metric is financial aid, uh, students receiving Pell Grants. Uh, what you can see there is we are below, uh, the state average across the board for the three, three years indicated, uh, 12, 13, 13, 14, and 14, 15. Uh, as of the 14, 15 year, uh, the state number's 46% compared to us at 42%. And then the last measure in the area of affordability has to do with the COFAL default rate, uh, and you know, uh, that, uh, Vice President Michael Bennett and his team have done a lot of work, and that's indicated by the data that we're gonna show here, and he's actually gonna bring up a little bit more detail in a while. Uh, but what you can see there is we are actually below, uh, the state average for fiscal year 11 and 12, uh, 22 to 19 and 20 to 18, but you can see the numbers flipped there, uh, on the last, for fiscal year 2013. We've actually, for the first time in a number of years, have been below the state average in terms of that, uh, cohort default rate, so that's very good news from our perspective. Uh, our next metric is in the area of, of access. Um, the very first metric is the high school graduation rate. So this metric's not only measures specifically the college, but is also looking at our service area, our district. Uh, you can see we're very nearly the state average when we look at the specific high school graduation rate. Uh, for high school graduates with acceleration, so this would be IP, IBAP, dual enrollment would all be included in this acceleration mechanism. Uh, you can see Pinellas County Schools is just slightly above, above the state average. And then finally, for high school, uh, graduates enrolling in a Florida college system, this would be primarily St. Petersburg College, but could include students who went to other surrounding state college areas. Uh, you can actually see that we're slightly above the state average. Um, for our third metric, it is, uh, areas achievement and articulation. Up top, we have the full-time retention rate, uh, and you can see from the information there, we are slightly above the state average across the board. Uh, our second measure in this area is the iPad's graduation rate. Uh, you've heard some of the discussion that's happened at the legislative level, where they focused now on adding a new metric that's 100% of the time, so for example, that would be a two-year degree in two years. The more traditional national... The more traditional national level looks at 150% of the time, which would be three years for a two-year degree. You can see we are below the average across the board. That has something to do with our service area. When you compare institutions such as Valencia, Tallahassee, Santa Fe, which are right on the doorstep of a university, you're going to see higher comparisons based on the percentage of full-time student enrollment they have at those institutions. But the good news there is we are closing the gap. Also, keep in mind, when you go out years and you're looking at a comparison metric, the time that you're comparing is impacted as well. So, if we look at, these are historical numbers. The first year there is fall 2010, 2011, and 2012. So, please keep that in mind, I imagine the gap is continuing to close. And then our last metric in this area is A, graduates enrolling in bachelor's programs. Here, we're pretty much well above the state across the board. These can be students either entering in a university baccalaureate program, or in the case, St. Petersburg College, our own baccalaureate programs, and we are exceeding the state in that particular one. The last area is on attainment. For the very first measure in the attainment area is educational attainment. You can see we are at 48% compared to the state at 46%. And this is calculated by looking at the service area in terms of those with graduate degrees, bachelor's degrees, associate's degrees, and then there's an addition to the calculation, which brings in technical certificates, and they use, LUMINAS estimate is 7%, and that's how we derive the 48% here for our local service area. When we look at job placement rates, you can look, these numbers are really close. We're about even overall. You're going to see a few of these, we may be up a percent or down percent, but pretty much at the state average when we look at across our degree types. And probably, one of the most outstanding metrics from the perspective of St. Petersburg College is the very last one there.
Yeah.
Those are considerably different. When we look at full-time employment earnings, you can see for the state average, it's 43%. We're almost $50,000 overall at St. Petersburg College. You can see the differences we go across, and then we go all the way over to a baccalaureate degree, we're going to be, state average is 58% compared to about $68,000, or $62,000 for baccalaureate degrees for our students. So, I think that's an impressive metric. Any questions I can answer regarding the data?
Hi, I'm rusty on this stuff, so forgive me if I'm asking a question that you've answered in the past, but that data seems really, really old to me. We're going back seven years in some cases. Is that because that's all we have access to?
No, no, this is, so this is how the states comparing the data, and some of these metrics, they're what we call lag metrics. So, they're going to be a time away. We're looking at graduation rates, and we're looking at across, you know, three years for the 150% of time. They have to go back to a certain point to look at reliable data over that timeframe. So, that's often the reason a lot of this is very historical in nature. Things like tuition changes, they look at in real time, at what happened the last semester of the last year. But we look at things like outcomes in terms of graduation rates, they're typically looking at very historical data.
I mean, that's hard to react to.
No, it's a problem. It's definitely a problem.
Yeah, if I was looking at my business seven years ago, I mean, it would be a very different picture to compare it to at this point, so, okay. But that's what the state uses.
Keep in mind, it's historical data, we can bring, you know, we have more recent data in our own systems. So, when we look at either some of the state-level outcome data or some of the national-level outcome data, it's going to be historical because that's the original cohort. So, they're not truly measuring the fall of 10, they're taking those students who entered fall of 10, and they're comparing them out over time to see how well they can do.
Okay, thank you.
To piggyback on that, Mr. Chairman, can you create a binder for me, maybe two or three of these, with this information in it for this summer for me, Dr. Carragio?
Sure. With these specific...
With these specific, I mean, I agree with trustee Bello. I mean, if I'm looking at my business seven years ago, I'm outdated, and technology's changed, a lot of things have changed over a seven-year period. But also, I think at the end of the day, the things that we do the best, the state doesn't take into real consideration. So, this summer, when I go on my roadshow, I'm going to take this, when I'm meeting with legislators, and I'm going to let them know, this is a problem. Like, we're doing the job that you've asked us to do, and we get dinged for doing a great job. It's not smart or good. And, you know, I know some legislators will make, will, you know, have, take issue with it, but at the end of the day, you know, the university system, if they could provide all the bachelor's degrees, they would have been doing it, and they would have been doing it effectively. There would not be any that we would offer at all. And we started the program, we have held true to it, so I want these, this data and these metrics to be able to be seen by legislators across the state when I'm meeting with them. So, if you could create a binder, Dr. Law, just maybe three or four of them, small binders, you know, colored, so that I can give them to them and talk through it. Because I think, you know, when we meet with these legislators, trustees, and we meet with folks of opinion elites, we need to let them know what St. Pete College is doing so that they can fight for us when it comes to the legislative process. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Financial aid update, Mr. Bennett.
Good morning, Chairman Foster, members of the board, Dr. Law. I'm here to provide a financial aid update, and I felt a good place to begin would be to look at the four areas that our financial aid office focuses on. We focus on students and families, we focus on our institution, we focus on the community, and we also focus on our office. 55 to 60% of our students receive some form of financial aid here at the college, and that is administered by 68 staff, and they award federal, state, college money, grants, works, and loan. One of our primary focuses is fast delivery, and we've had 48-hour turnaround time in our work queues, and we also recently implemented 20 electronic forms where students can simply sign online, complete the form, use digital signature, and it immediately is imaged, and that gives us the fast delivery. We have a very robust component in debt management, which I'll talk about, and we have a very good website, extensive communications, publications, and social media. This is the applicants and awarded students over the last six years. On average, we process approximately 40,000 students, and to the far right, you see, with three months to go, we have 22,400 students awarded. In terms of funds, this shows the breakdown of funds, grants, work, and loans over the last six years, and the decline is basically a reduction in loans, which I'll talk about a little bit. But last year, we awarded $142 million. Dr. Carragio mentioned cohort default rate, and basically what that is, is you take a year when a group of students are going into repayment, and you follow them over the next three years and see how many go into default. So, you can see that's 11 years of our cohort default rate, and what we saw is, we did some analysis about five years ago, and we saw if we did nothing, we were heading up to 39.1% and 36.7% default. And that's a problem, because when you go above 30 for three years, you jeopardize all your federal aid. So, we did two things. First of all, our staff created a comprehensive program to encourage financial literacy and debt management. We developed materials, and we looked for every opportunity to work with students and advised them on lowering borrowing levels. We got into the classroom in the SLS classes and did other welcome-back and rotation events, and did over 200 events for students over the past several years. And we also, thanks to the board's support, we outsourced help for our students that were in trouble, so they can get a call from a trained counselor who will work with their servicer and help them get out of default and get into repayment. And this group has done an outstanding job. You see, they have cured 10,024 accounts. They also have a robust website that almost 9,000 of our students use to manage their loans and to get timely information, and we continue to work with the vendor on a monthly basis. This slide shows our efforts are working. You see, since our high in 2012 of student loans, we have seen a steady decline in student borrowing, $28 million over five years, while seeing no decline in the amount of federal Pell Grants we disperse. So, we're very excited about that. We also examine our business process and see what is the best approach for students. And I would say, one of the biggest initiatives that I've been involved in in my career is we, as an institution, looked at the regulations, we looked how we were doing academic standing at the college, and we looked at how we were doing satisfactory academic progress, SAP, for financial aid, and we said, we're taking in all the students' credits. Why? Why not just focus on the program? And a group led by Dr. Carragio and Dr. Renard and eight talented others, we worked an entire year to align both policies, have one policy, use it for both academic standing and SAP. And that chart shows the impact when we turned it on in spring of 2015 on academic standing. But more important, if you look at the dramatic changes in terms of financial aid eligibility, we have students that went from meeting SAP an increase of 40%. Warning went down 52%. Not maintaining progress went down 43%. What does that mean? Students continue to receive the funding they need, and we've done this presentation across the country, and when others look at it, they're stunned at the numbers, but they know they don't have the talent that we had to implement this and the focus, but it's one of the biggest things I've been involved in. We do things in the community. Last year, we had 191 events to 6,274 students. So, we're working with the high schools, we're working with the community faculty, and we're trying to look for grant money to enhance our default prevention efforts and create financial wellness on campus in the upcoming years. We serve other offices, we try to provide the lens for financial aid data, and we alert the administration about proposed legislation that would affect the school or students. And most important, we ensure compliance with laws and regulations. We're very happy, over the last five years, we've had clean audits, and we also provide answers to the various complaint systems versus inside the college and outside the college when they contact us regarding student processing. Professional development roadmap, our area has over 500 activities for our staff to continue to grow and improve. You see, over the last six years, they have had 5,272 hours of professional development, and we've also supported them, and we're very active in participating in professional associations to develop our staff, and we've had 170 staff attend 47 conferences over the last six years. And lastly, in being involved in leadership, we've been involved in all those activities there at the state, regional, and national level, and you know, important things happen on the relationship level, and we've also enhanced the college's reputation nationally. And by this involvement, we wind up being involved and being able to participate in shaping policy. In closing, I would want to say, financial aid works. It's a tremendous thing for many of our students, and I'm very proud of the efforts of our team, and I've never worked with a better group of people.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael.
Dr. Bennett, really quick, just for the board's purposes, because we have new members on the board, well, one new member. Ms. Bello went through this with us, I'm sorry. But we went through a transition where we were fixing our financial aid and our collections and all that other stuff, and I saw a little bit of that up there. Can you give us just a bigger update on that and how we turned the corner on that, please?
Collections and...
Well, in terms of the folks, after, we had a default rate that was a little higher at one point, and now we're pushing that back down, and we went, did some outside, we had an outside group come in and help us with that stuff.
Yeah, we had, we had a group called I-3 Group, and we've outsourced with them since 2014, and they've had the success of helping students getting on the phone with their servicers and getting into repayment plans.
And that's important. Important because of why?
That's important because if our default rate goes over 30%, we put at risk $110 million. So, we've been very happy, and it was the board that made that decision several years ago, and it was clearly a big help.
Great.
Thank you.
I have a question, really quick. Have we ever, oh, I'm sorry, we keep getting you halfway back to your chair and making you come back. It's an exercise, you're getting your steps in. Have we ever thought about partnering with a bank specifically on that program? So many of the banks have budgets for financial literacy that I would think that we'd be able to get grant money or free teachers or...
Let me say this, when we negotiated the contract with Fifth Third, who's our current banker, one of the things we put in there was that they would offer financial literacy workshops for our students, and they've done, they continue to do it. We've done hundreds of them. They do it on a continuing...
Okay, so we do do that.
Small-dose basis, yes. That was a good suggestion, though.
Got it.
Great. I'm going to let you sit down before I ask my question.[1577.04][1577.04](Laughter). Community outreach update, Mr. Reed.
Good morning, Chair Foster, members of the board, Dr. Law. My name is Reggie Reed, retention manager at Seminole Campus, and this morning I will be briefly presenting on our college-wide community outreach efforts. All right, so here we have our high school outreach update. Since Student Services took on this initiative back in late February, we've had a total of 118 high school visits. Of those 118 high school visits, we had a confirmed head count of 1,524 students in attendance. These visits consisted of lunch and learns, workshops, classroom visits, and also parent info sessions. Of these, of these 118 events, we managed to collect 231 Getting to Know You cards. So, for those who are unfamiliar with the Getting to Know You card process, these are cards that we give to potential prospects to fill out and provide us with certain information such as name, date of birth, phone number, and email address. We then take that information and we input it into our CRM software system. That software system then automatically generates communications to that potential prospect to encourage and assist that student to apply to the college. All right, here we have our overall community outreach efforts. As you can see, the chart to the right gives you a breakdown of the total community outreach events that we had for the semester. You can see that the data starts with week seven, because this is when we started tracking it, and this is when Student Services took on this initiative. So, it also breaks down the number of events that we had each week, and also the number of SBC staff members needed to operate those events each week. As you can see, to the left, we have a breakdown on a graph of the number of attendees by week. Mainly, our SBC staff participation includes our academic advisors and also our three community relations coordinators, our CRCs. And also, as you can see, during spring break, we had a huge jump, so I'm going to explain that on the next slide, okay? All right, so here's a notable, here's a breakdown of our notable community events. Our Clearwater Campus attended the Wild Spas. So, Wild Spas is a huge music festival that is done annually. It's known to draw large crowds of individuals, mainly high school students. So, our thought process on this was to simply meet the students where they're at. We knew that the students would definitely be there. So, of the 25,000 confirmed attendees, we managed to collect 88 Getting to Know You cards. Now, 88 Getting to Know You cards may seem relatively small compared to the total amount of attendees that were there. We had to keep in mind that there were hundreds of other vendors there as well, but we did manage to touch hundreds of potential prospects in the process. Also, this type of event, I mean, it's really chaotic. I mean, it's a lot of things going on, a lot of festivities going on. So, the key thing with this is to, you know, plant that seed and to make our presence felt in an event like this. On April 22nd, the Allstate Campus hosted the Third Annual Touch a Truck. This was a community event that promoted the public safety industry. We had a confirmed head count of over 700 attendees from the community, and we also collected 193 Getting to Know You cards in the process. Lastly, our Explore SPC Week was very successful college-wide. This is an event that we've done over the last few years. During our Explore SPC Week, potential prospects are able to attend different campuses and participate in various info sessions pertaining to financial aid, student life, diffused program... diffuse program, special programs, a variety of different things. And also, the students are able to come on campus and take a facility tour. And the best-selling feature of Explore SBC Week is that students get their forty-dollar application fee waived. So this year, we had a confirmed head count of over nine hundred potential prospects. That week alone, we had six hundred and ninety-one students apply to the college. Of that six ninety-one, so far, we've enrolled a hundred, over a hundred students for either summer or fall courses. All right? And this bottom chart to the right, it gives you a breakdown of our total Getting to Know You cards since February twentieth. We've collected a total of one thousand six hundred and fifty-five Getting to Know You cards. Two hundred and fifteen of those cards have turned into applications, okay? Which is a thirteen percent conversion rate, which is not the best, but it is something, and it's something that we can continue to build on, and it does show that there is room for improvement, so we can continue to push forward on this initiative. Do I have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Kevin.
I don't have any questions, but, Dr. Law, did you throw somebody else in the presidential pool? I see he's wearing a bow tie.
I don't know. He's got the right of here, okay? He's got the right of here. This is important, Reggie's done a great job. We monitor this every week, this is now the Wednesday webinar, but we told the board in the fall that if there was an event in the community, we would have somebody there. And we wanted to follow up to, say, two hundred and sixty-five events we were able to identify, put them on a schedule. Somebody was at every one of those events, somebody from one of our campuses. So we're working as hard as we can on the enrollment piece. It just, it's just tough, but I'm glad that we followed through. You know, there's a lot of juniors that come to those things, too. It's not just seniors that we're dealing with. So I think Reggie and his colleagues have done a really fine job with all of that.
Like I said, the key thing is like just planting that seed. It may, it may not, you know, translate instantly, but the thing is knowing that our presence felt in the community is a huge factor. We're talking to a lot of freshmen, sophomore, and getting them engaged about St. Pete College, talking about all the special programs that we have and the transition they can make from high school. So we're doing, we're doing what we need to do there in the community.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reed, great, great presentation. Of your high school visits, is that strictly Pinellas County?
Pinellas County, yes, sir.
Do we dip our toe in Hillsborough, Pasco, Manatee?
We, uh...
Or is that frowned upon?
Frowned upon.
Well, okay.
The answer is yes.
From our standpoint, far as our advisors, we don't send advisors out to any other county. Now, our community relations coordinators, they go out, you know, time to time to different counties to do some recruiting, when they have like career fairs and things like that.
Okay. And, uh, public and private schools?
Public and private schools, thanks.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Who are the staff who comprise these efforts, and for how long has there been the concerted effort for community outreach?
All right, so we took on this initiative back in February, February twentieth. So pretty much, we're sending our career and academic advisors out there. All right, so it is a learning curve for them, because our advisors are, you know, taught to advise. So recruiting is, you know, it's a skill set. It's a skill set. So we're in a, we're in the process of getting them equipped to actually going out and, you know, starting that conversation with students when they're out there in the community. It's a selling process, you have to sell the student, especially when you go into an event like Wild Splash, when it's not very educational, they're there for fun. So to be able to go up to a student and say, "Hey, St. Pete College is where I need to be at," you know, you have to convince somebody on that. So we're trying to encourage and get our advisors over that learning curve.
And I would buy whatever you're selling. I think you're, I think you're doing great.
I agree, I think you're doing fantastic. I do have a couple of questions. Recruiting is an art, and have we thought about potentially enlisting professional people to attend the events and recruit on our behalf?
Well, I, I mean, I would love to have recruiters on board. Our three recruiters that we currently do have, they're awesome. They're very inspirational. When we send those individuals down, they're not specialists in specific programs, but initially, when you're going out to these community events, the purpose is to get the student or the prospect interested in the college, you know? Then you send them on campus, and then that's when the advisors do their job, far as informing them about those special programs that we have to offer those students. So I would love to have some recruiters on board.
I would say that would be a worthwhile investment conversation. I mean, it really, people get paid to do that for a reason. My other question, I don't mean to be the squeaky wheel today, I promise I'm not normally this inquisitive, I've just been gone too long. If we had converted, not that we didn't do a great job, but you said six hundred and ninety-one applications and a hundred and one enrolled, that's less than fifteen percent.
Yeah, it is.
What could we have done better?
So right now, we do have the actual list of those students who applied during that timeframe, so we are constantly reaching out to them to encourage them to enroll, to enroll for classes. So obviously, the summer just started this week, so now we're encouraging them to enroll for fall. So we're constantly in contact with them.
I think that's a work in progress, Ms. Bella, that the, you know, don't forget, we're in May, and these are students who are coming to us in August. So they could have applied, waiting their chance to finish high school and then get into the flow of coming to college. So I'm with you, it looks a little low, but I think there's more there. At the end of the year, we'll see more payback on that one. Those students are coming to us.
I don't disagree, but I'd love to see what, what kind of our plan and process is on the five hun, five hundred and whatever, I'm not good at math in my head, but however many we didn't get, you know, what does it look like?
Let us come back, because once we have a student's name, then they kick into a very formal system where we follow up on a regular basis through the CRM and other things. And we'll bring that to you next time, okay?
Like I said, that's what I thought, but I didn't hear that. So again, squeaky wheel this time, I won't be always sorry.
You're doing fine, thanks.
With, with respect to the Getting to Know You cards, is there any place on those cards that distinguish whether those are first-time touches or people who may not otherwise be considering St. Pete College for their next step, or those people could be part of?
There isn't any information on the card pertaining to that, but as of last week, we had a meeting to discuss levels of different leads, so a valuable lead or a lead that may not be so, like if we go to an event and we're just getting, collecting cards, and they may not translate into a application, then we won't focus so much on those efforts. But the ones who are valuable leads, we'll definitely make sure that we're reaching out to those students, you know, constantly to get those students on board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Monthly financial report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, board members, and Dr. Law. This morning's financial report, as of April thirtieth. We'll look at our revenues first. So our student tuition at fifty-one point seven million dollars. We see the year-over-year change is about the same as last month, the negative five point seven percent. We knew we were continuing this trend, so we have received majority of the summer revenue. We had about a million so far this month in revenue that we'll see in the next month's report. Our state appropriations, we're receiving as expected. And then our student fees are coming in, in line with the tuition, so we see there where we're about five point seven percent or five point three percent in our student fees. Our total revenue at a hundred and twenty-five point eight million at a negative three point three percent year-over-year change. Now looking at our expenses with our personnel, last month, I mentioned to you that March was a three-pay period. When last fiscal year, it was in April, so this year, we see the apples-to-apples comparison with a year-over-year change of a negative one point one percent. And also looking at our current expense and our capital, we see here the year-over-year change for current expense is negative six point eight percent. Last month, when I came to you, that percentage was negative three. So we're seeing where we're spending less money in this fiscal year. Also, in the capital department, we have a negative five point three percent, and last month, we were at a negative four point four. So again, our efforts in saving and spending less at the end of the year. The revenue over expense is five point five million dollars. So in your packet for this month, you would have received the lab fee memo. And before I go into asking for approval for the lab fee schedule, I wanted to give you a recap of what we've done over the last few years. A few years back, each lab course had its own lab fee. The dean submitted a form that included the lab calculation, which was determined by anticipated lab expenses for each lab course. Every three years, that particular lab fee was reviewed. About five years ago, the college changed how we calculate lab fees. The courses were grouped into a light discipline that shared resources instead of each individual course having its own lab fee. We also began calculating the lab fee based on actual data and worked closely with the deans on any possible upcoming changes. Our current procedure is to review these lab fees every two years, and this method allows us to review the lab fees collectively instead of individually on different revenue cycles, or review cycles. In the past two years, we've actually reviewed them annually. Over the last few years, the revised method has significantly reduced the number of lab fees on the schedule. This year's proposal includes the deletion of one lab fee, which is our Orthotics and Prosthetics Upper Division lab fee, because that program ended spring of this fiscal year, and seven reductions in the following programs, College of Education, Communications, Physical Science, and Building Arts and EMS. At this time, if there are no other questions, I request approval for the lab fee schedule.
Some movements, Chair.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. In our packet, there were additional deletions of lab fees in addition to OMP, I just wanted...
So those in your packet memo, as I mentioned, we have grouped the courses into specific disciplines.
Okay.
And so if that course is no longer offered, that course no longer would have a lab fee, so it's on the...
It's perfect, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Any questions on the monthly financial report before she leaves?
No, but it looks like Dr. Law and Mr. Chair, they're going, the governor's taking a really big swack at vetoing the entire budget, so we may end up better off. In that situation, if that happens, they'll probably end up at the Senate's position, which would have four hundred million more in the budget somewhere.
They'll find a way to screw it up.
Can't raise my hopes up.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope he vetoes the whole budget, and then they have to go to the Senate's position.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Miles, only good news today, only good news.
I need to pay Jeanette more to stay up here longer and deliver this news. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dr. Law, my name is Brian Miles, and this morning, I'll be briefing you on what we think will be the proposed fiscal year seventeen, eighteen budget. Of course, that will depend on what happens with the governor's office later on. You know that the legislature passed its budget last week. We were alerted to the final budget on Monday, and so since that time, I have been working with my staff, the VPs, and Dr. Law to put something together for your review. I will walk you through where we think we will be next year, I'll do that today. And then between now and the June board meeting, I'll be working with the VPs, Dr. Law, and other groups college-wide to propose recommendations on how we continue to right-size the budget. You'll recall last month, I stood before you, and I recapped the factors that have impacted our budget over the course of this year. And to further recap, those factors include increase in cost-related health insurance and tuition waivers. They include a decrease in tuition and what we thought at the time would be a decrease in state appropriations, which have come to fruition. The factors also included a need to reduce our reliance on fund balance. And so during our discussion last month and over the course of this year, I've also explained to you ways that we have tried to realign the budget, given these factors. And some of those adjustments that have been, have been made include health plan modifications, an increase in plan contributions, a decrease in current expense last fall, a decrease in personnel expense this spring, and also the development of a three-year financial plan. And of course, most importantly, we continue to take deliberate action to stabilize and eventually improve our enrollment for tuition revenue purposes. I hope that my remarks at each of these meetings have not been repetitive, but I feel it's necessary to share with you where we are each and every month, and to bring this information forward as accurately and as timely as possible to make sure that everybody understands the budgeting process is transparent. So if it has been overkill, I apologize, but I think it's important that everybody know where we are. If at any time you have questions about the budget, feel free to reach out to me. I'm willing to meet with you individually to walk you through it, and I would extend that invitation to members of the college family, although I would prefer to meet with them in large groups so that I don't have ongoing budget meetings every day, all day. Let's turn now to the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen proposed budget. We'll start with estimated revenue. You know where we are from an enrollment standpoint. From a budgetary standpoint, while we will not concede that we will continue to be down enrollment, we need to budget down based on where we are right now. And so the number that you see here is a projection of three point five percent decrease in enrollment. If we increase our enrollment, and I hope that we do, then we will be glad to collect that extra revenue when that comes in. State appropriations consist of money from the Florida College System Fund and also the lottery. And you can see, as compared to last year, we're about one point six million dollars up from the program fund, and we are two point four million down in the lottery. We would rather be up in the program fund, because this means we receive cash each month throughout the course of the year, whereas lottery payments start coming in in February. So from a cash flow standpoint, we would rather see it the way it is this year. It hasn't been like that over the last few years. Performance funding, we don't know where we'll end up, but we've programmed the same amount that we received last year. Operating costs for new facilities, we're expecting the same amount we received last year, and then of course, you see that the various fees tend to track where enrollment is. And so if enrollment is down, those tend to be down as well. Industry certifications, we expect to receive what we're budgeting for. I will tell you that last year, we exceeded that by double, and it would not surprise me if we exceeded again this year. That would be good news. Other revenues are a bit down. Fund transfers in, we'll do a little bit more of that this year, just to help the budget along. Our stabilization reserve, this is the line item that I've mentioned to you all year, that relies on fund balance, and we want to reduce that reliance on fund balance. So while we will, we will still need to use one point five million of that fund balance this year in that line item, we are, we will realize a reduction by about six hundred and seventy-three thousand. And also, the one-time non-recurring funds, those are purchase order roll-forward amounts. We typically carry those from one fiscal year into the next for funds that are encumbered but not yet spent. All of this to say that our projected revenue in the new fiscal year will be approximately one hundred and forty-three million. That's down by about ten point eight million from what we budgeted for last year. Let's talk about expense first. Personnel expenses, as you know, is our largest overall expense at the college. And you can see the first three line items. There's a reduction in each one of those totaling approximately three point six million dollars. This is a result of our personnel reduction plan that we developed and instituted, began instituting this spring. We'll continue to execute that plan as we move forward into the new fiscal year. We had a slight uptick in the professional category as a result of some GL code changes. Some employees were categorized in the professional rather than other categories, so we saw a small increase by about four hundred thousand there. And then we had decreases in the other categories, except for our student assistants. We're budgeting the same expense for this fiscal year. Health insurance, this is one of the areas that we have attempted to focus on this past year. We are budgeting more for this expense in the upcoming fiscal year. That difference will be about three point five million. All this for total personnel costs of one hundred and seventeen point four million. That's a reduction of about nine hundred thousand as compared to last fiscal year, the current fiscal year, I should say. Here's a look at our current expense. We're still working on the travel piece. We have budgeted more for travel, because that's where our, we have actually incurred more in expense in travel over the last few years. So while we're budgeting more in this category in this upcoming fiscal year, we are making a conscious effort to reduce in this category, and we'll continue to try and do that in the next fiscal year. Drop down to the middle of the page, services and fees and materials and supplies. These line items contain these strategic budget request amounts that we brought forward last month. Some of those requests include revitalizing our HR department, investing in our CRM system, and also commissioning an assessment of how well we're complying with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Our current expense for the upcoming fiscal year will be twenty-nine point two million as projected, that's a decrease of three point one million dollars. Capital spending, we were able to cut some of our expense in our tech budget, bringing our total expense and capital spending to two point eight million, a reduction of six hundred thousand. Our total operating costs for the year, we anticipate those will be at one hundred and forty-nine point five million. That's an overall reduction as compared to the current fiscal year of four point six million, but unfortunately, it still leaves us at a deficit of approximately six point two million. But unfortunately, it still leaves us at a deficit of approximately 6.2 million. Now, what does all this mean? This means we need to find the money. And so between now and the June board meeting, as I mentioned earlier, the vice presidents, Dr. Law, and other groups and I will be working together to develop recommendations that we will bring forward for your consideration on where and how we would find this money. I will tell you that the efforts to increase enrollment continue daily. I know everybody's efforts are well-placed there, and that's really where we'll make the largest gain with respect to the budget. We had, you know, state appropriations were cut by about 1.6 million this year, if everything stays the way it is now. But our biggest hit was in the health insurance, which we're adjusting for, and also our decrease in tuition due to enrollment. So we need to get those under control, and I have every confidence that we will. I'd like to thank the college family for its support throughout the year in helping to realign the budget. We're not quite where we want to be yet, but I will say that there's not a day that doesn't go by where I have conversations with people and they share with me how they are using their best practices in their departments to cut costs, to right-size their budgets in an effort to help overall college-wide budget. So I want to thank them for that, and I want to thank you for your good guidance. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to entertain your questions and concerns.
Mr. Stone cipher.
Thank you, Mr. Miles, for that update. Where are we at currently with, I know we spoke, we've spoken a few times about the auxiliary revenue piece of this. It won't be a part of this budget specifically, but a plan moving forward. You know, it's obviously cutting costs is one thing, but if we can find a way to bring more revenue in that's not solely dependent upon enrollment, I think it'd be a nice angle, a nice avenue to go down as well. Is there a plan currently being worked on for that?
There is, and it's not a formally developed plan yet. We are doing our research. Part of my budgeting team went down to Florida Southwestern State College about a month ago to explore their auxiliary services. I've learned what Polk State College is doing with their auxiliary services. And internally, we're specifically looking at how we're using our facilities college-wide in the hoax that we can better utilize those spaces, especially the ones that are vacant and not being used, but which we're paying utilities on and other expenses. And we want to look to see if we can possibly rent those spaces and possibly even sell whatever we don't need later on down the road. Of course, those decisions would need to come before the board. But yes, Mr. Stone cipher, we are concocting a plan, and I will be back in front of you at some later date. I suspect that will be one of the proposed recommendations that I bring forward to you in June, although that has longer-term implications, especially the sale or rental of property. But we'll continue to work on that, and I'll be back in front of you before long with some recommendations.
Thanks. Great. Any other questions?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Continuing with...
He's still standing there. You're supposed to wait.
Do we know, and this is going to seem elementary, but do we know what a single student is worth to the college? Like, if we looked at this $6 million and said, how many, like, where the rubber meets the road, how many kids do we need, or how many enrollees do we need? Do we know what that number is?
I don't have that number. I've taught my head in this bell, but I'm happy to bring it forward next month. I'd be happy to share that.
I mean, it, to me, seems insurmountable or surmountable at that point, you know? If we could look at, what is one student worth to us? I agree. I was doing the math, and obviously, if the student tuition is down 3.5 percent because of enrollment, and that's 5.6 million dollars, that's, you know, the significant, most of the $6 million deficit. So if we can have a number to identify the goal, you're right, that makes it more tangible to what the goal is. We can have that.
We'll get you better information. Bring it back. Happy to do that.
Thank you. And, I mean, you have a, it's an arduous task. I get it. We're with you, and it'll be up to us to make a lot of the tough choices. I mean, yes, I think finding revenue sources without raising tuition is certainly a key. We need to look for ways to increase revenue, but it's still a $6 million deficit that has to be filled. And, you know, for those that want transparency and openness, our number-one expense is personnel and benefits. And I think that we're, this board's going to have to look line by line, program by program, and have to make some really tough decisions to fill that gap. So everyone needs to be a part of that, but just hear us when we say it's, there's going to be some revenue, but there's going to be some draconian cuts that, I mean, we can't print money. I know we have a print shop somewhere, and it would be nice if we could, but we can't. We can't spend what we don't have, so it's going to be another tough year. So strap on your bootstraps. Thank you.
Can I ask a process question? Harkening back to prior presentation that discussed how our fees have remained, our tuition has remained flat as opposed to some of the other colleges. Procedurally, is it an option to raise tuition? And if so, what is that process? I thought we were constricted by the legislature on that.
We're restricted by the governor.
That's a thought, okay.
The legislature may have adopted some language this time, but that has been one of the governor's highest priorities, is to reduce the cost of college. Truly, they monitor our board packet to see if there are any additions...
I got the speech.
Okay, so you got it, okay. So...
I just was looking, apparently, some of those other boards that have increased tuition didn't get the speech, I guess.
Is it an option? Yeah. Nice knowing you. Nice having you on the board.
Right. I just wanted to be clear on that, that we're not increasing tuition.
I think we have to grow the enterprise rather than charge more for the enterprise.
Perfect.
Thank you, trustee Emeritus.
Exactly.
Human resources. Action item, personnel report. There you see it before you. Dr. Law, is it your recommendation that we approve this?
It is my recommendation. I can't make the motion.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We have a presentation, Mr. Wector, five-year educational plant survey.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law, Ms. Bello, welcome back. It's nice to have you. My intent this morning is to step you through the next two agenda items, actually, six D-2 and six D-3. They're combined in my very brief presentation, so that you can see how they work together. I want to step you through the funding process and how these two documents, they're state-mandated, flow into the eventual process that we hope that we know as PICO funding. So first, in your packet is the five-year educational plant survey, and then second is the capital improvement. The five-year educational plant survey, as the word implies, is a five-year report. It's due on July 1st of this year. It's a result of research and data and interviews with all of the campus leaders, the provost. We go around each campus. We talk about their specific needs, their desires. We look at our current facilities inventory, utilization thereof, age thereof, things like that. Bottom line is, our five-year educational plant survey this time consists mostly of recommendations for replacements and refurbishments of existing buildings as opposed to increasing our fiscal footprint. Examples of that that are going on currently are the replacement of the Clearwater Library, the replacement of St. Peter's Gibbs Administration Facility, things like that largely comprise our five-year recommendation. So from that survey, once it goes to Tallahassee, we are required each year, and this is also before you for consideration, is the annual capital improvement plan. So we take that five-year survey, we name our top four or five priorities, three, four, or five priorities, and those become our, basically, our ask for that upcoming legislative session. So before you, and we'll go through the priorities themselves here in a minute, is the consideration of the capital improvement plan for the upcoming legislative session. Once approved by the Department of Education, all of 28 colleges CIP as we know it fuel or feed into legislative budget requests, that makes its way to the legislature for consideration of their PICO requests. And in a perfect world, that is the result, or that results in the annual PICO allocations that are considered and appropriated by the legislature through as a result of those recommendations. So again, the top line is the five-year survey. The next three lines are considerations, are activities that occur annually. So the annual CIP, you will see every May or June for consideration. They go to the DOE after, as of July 1st, and then that feeds itself into the legislative budget funding process. Specifically, as it relates to our CIP, this is what the summary sheet looks like, and the important notes here are on the very left-hand margin down near the bottom, where it says remodeling, new construction, replacement. Those are our top four priorities. We are assuming, and it's only an assumption now until the governor signs the budget, that we will get 6.5 million for that St. Peter's and St. Gibbs project, leaving our total ask at the legislative level at 3.5, so that remains our top priority for next year. And then the next two priorities move into the replacement of the Health Education Center in Pinellas Park. Planning money, construction money for a Phase One, planning money and construction money for a Phase Two. And then our fourth priority is a build-out of a learning support commons at our downtown center, so that we can emulate at downtown what we have accomplished at the other larger campuses. With that, I'll entertain any questions and ask for your approval.
One question I have, Dr. Law, is do we really feel like we're going to get the Health Education Center done in Phase One and two?
I don't know. And I had the same question. We haven't made any progress on that, Mr. Gibbons, but you know, with the legislature, the sooner you ask, the closer you are to getting something. It won't happen next year, is my guess, but I think if it's on the list, we'll work it a little harder, they'll work a little harder, they know it's an important product for us. The only other thing that we need to get to is the Learning Support Center at downtown. If it's all on our list, we can adjust on the fly once the legislature gets together next year. That's not a, what are we looking for there? 2.6 million? That's not a huge ask over and above that. So, you know, I think the board is well-advised to put this Health Education Center stuff on the agenda and move it forward.
Any other questions? I have a motion to approve the five-year plant survey and the capital improvement plan.
Some move?
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Quality enhancement plan update. Dr. Crawford.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Law. As a SACS liaison, I am extremely happy to see a full board today, and I'm here with Jennifer and Heather to give you an update on our reaffirmation accreditation and our quality enhancement plan. As you know, every 10 years, our regional accreditor asks all institutions to submit reports on 97 standards. These standards are reviewed by volunteers from our peer institutions, and by meeting their criteria, we allow our students, their future employers, and any institution that they might transfer to, to receive a sense of validity and reliability of the quality of our institution, as well as our commitment to continuous improvement. A part of this process also includes the development of a quality enhancement plan, which Heather and Jennifer are going to speak to in just a second. This represents the timeline of what we've been up to. In March, we submitted our 97 reports, and just a couple of weeks ago, our off-site committee reviewed those reports. As with any review process, we can expect to have some either follow-up or clarifying questions, which we'll have an opportunity to submit with, along with our quality enhancement plan in August. These will be reviewed by the onsite committee when they arrive in the middle of October. Any further clarifying questions can be submitted, and those will be reviewed by the Board of Trustees of SACS in their meeting in June of 2018. This last slide just provides you examples of the types of areas where questions might be received at each of those three sections, either by our off-site committee, the onsite committee, or the Board of Trustees, when they come up with their final recommendation. And the key to this slide is really just to recognize that by the time it gets to the board in June of 2018, that there's usually very few or zero questions that are still being followed up on. I'm now going to turn this over to Heather to speak about the quality enhancement plan.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to very quickly, I know some of our board members have already heard this before, but we've got a new board member and a returning board member that might need a little bit of an update. Our quality enhancement plan, as Sabrina mentioned, that is part of our SACS reaffirmation requirement. But what SACS charges each of its colleges and universities to do is to take every 10 years, sit down and really look at an area of our institution that needs enhancing of quality. Now, we are extremely initiative-rich here at SPC, and we do a very good job of, you know, supporting our students. So we had to come up with a topic that was very focused. As you can see here, they require that it's a carefully-designed course of action. It needs to be a faculty-led collaborative process with broad-based involvement, and so we have included all of our stakeholders. And then we want to make sure, SACS makes sure, that we have a well-defined topic that is related to enhancing student learning. So with that charge, we actually came to the board this time last year in May of 2016 with the topic focus of college readiness for long-term success. So what we did in the past year is, we actually had a quality enhancement committee of about 50 to 60, on a good day, faculty, staff, students, and alumni that got together, and we refined our topic focus even further into our Ready, Set, Succeed Plan. And the elements of our Ready, Set, Succeed Plan, we had to really dive into our data internally and decide, okay, what area of the college we decided that was our college readiness focus, but what population of students was really at most at need? And what we found is that we have our flexible opt-out students, these students that are affected by Senate Bill 1720, so that now, even though they are recommended strongly to take developmental education classes, they do not have to. They can go directly into college-level courses, and they are not college-ready. They are underprepared. So we felt that that would be the regulation focus, and... We felt that that would be, I don't know why. I want to turn it back on. Okay, we'll try this again. Our flexible opt-out students, these again are ones that are, have that strong recommendation for developmental education, but they're choosing to just go straight into college-level courses. And they're coming up against barriers and challenges that, you know, we need to provide some additional supports for them, so they can make it through. So we would like to catch these students early in their first year, so Jennifer's going to explain what our neighborhood for success is going to look like in a few moments, but really have a community, which is our method, that will support them during that first year in fall and spring to help them get these college-ready skills. Okay, so our learning outcomes that we're focusing on, the first portion is ready, where we're going to have them set their learner mindset, so we're getting them ready to learn in the best condition possible. The core elements that we're going to focus on are motivation and ownership. And then our second learning goal will be the set area, and this is where they're going to actually take on these learning strategies. And the core elements there are knowledge monitoring, comprehension, and time management, some things that many of our students struggle with. Even though we're focusing specifically on this group, we're hoping to be able to share a lot of this out with our college community as well. And then our last learning goal will be the success part. So they're going to take their learner mindset and their learning strategies, and we're going to follow them through their career here at SPC, and we're going to hope that this supports their persistence, retention, and completion, so that they're able to achieve the goals that they've stated from the beginning, and they can finish what they've started. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, and she's going to explain how we're planning to do all of this.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jennifer Haver. I am the QEP faculty lead, and I am excited to be sharing with you how we will be delivering what we're going to be doing. So we are going to try a pilot this fall. We will pilot 60 students. These students are coming from St. Pete's Gibbs and Clearwater, because those are our campuses that have the most flexible opt-out students, and we will be having them enroll in a course that will go from the fall to the spring semester. The courses will be led by a faculty member and a success coach, who is actually a learning support specialist. They will be working together to lead our neighborhoods. This is a non-credit course, but students will be given incentives to be part of the course. We're currently working on a grant with Francis New to get some monies to provide all the students with laptop computers. We know these students are students who need the technology and oftentimes can't handle our classes without it, so we want to provide some incentives for them. We'll also be working with the Career and Academic Communities and Smart Start to make sure we're complementing each other. In fact, if you look at the top of Page Three, you have a packet that looks like this. The top of Page Three shows you a little bit about what that will look like. So we have done a very good job, I think, of planning, and it should be an external packet, planning how this will look like. We know that we have a lot of initiatives, so we want to make sure that we're all working together. We're not working differently, so we're working together. So if you look at the packet, you'll see at the top this nice little drawing that we have that shows that we start with our orientation, then for those...
have that shows that we start with our orientation, then for those students who will be part of our community, they will then go into our community, and also we recognize that we'll have those career and academic events as well. So just to give you a brief idea of what that year will look like, and I do actually have a sample syllabus on Page Four, so you can see that as well, but our theme is neighborhoods. We want our students to be part of neighborhoods, which are learning communities. They will be put into a 12-week online course. It will have five modules based on that neighborhood theme. They will also have two college, two events at the colleges, at the St. Pete Gibbs campus and the Clearwater campus. One is called Off on the Right Foot, and one is called Keep It Going. And I think Dr. Coraggio is responsible for our Keep It Going name. Off on the Right Foot has been a program that we've already been doing for a couple of semesters on many campuses, and so we want to keep that with our initiative. We will also have five face-to-face meetings, and again, these will be led by our faculty success, our faculty mentor and our success coach. In the spring semester, our theme will be Connections Beyond the Neighborhood. We will continue that online course. By the way, that is being developed by Michelle Piper and her team, and we will also have then on-campus events as well as the Let's Do This event for those students. We know, we hear from a lot of students, that community connections is extremely important. And so for these students, you know, especially, we want to make sure that they have those connections. So this is our five-year rollout. So this will be a pilot with our 60 students this semester, and you can see we're doing two campuses. In our Year One, we will actually be including an online section as well for our three, and then by Year Two, we are very ambitious. We want to pull it out to all the campuses, all the educational locations at St. Petersburg College that has flexible opt-out students. So you can see in Year Two, we will be doing that, and we will reach a total of 810 students. The great thing, and I think Heather mentioned this, is that the goal is not just to affect 810 students, but it's to bring these resources, these ideas, what we do to anybody, faculty that want professional development, students who want time-management resources. The goal is to provide this to everyone, so ultimately. I just want to end by saying a couple of quick things. First of all, our next steps are at the bottom of Page Three, so you can see what we'll be doing. We will be submitting our document in August 1st. We have the document written. We actually have our first draft, I'm very excited about. I want to thank Dr. Tom Furlong and Jackie Scrin for being our first readers for those documents. We are currently doing some revision of those, and we will be providing that to you in September so that you will be able to review that before the onsite visit in October. I also want to thank the board, the college family, Dr. Law, for your enthusiasm, your support of this. Dr. Law especially, I appreciate you, your respect for my enthusiasm. And we'll miss you when you leave, but we will make sure that you get this document so that you can do some reading in your retirement. And thank you, guys. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Nice presentation. Any questions? Well done.
That presentation is, was in fact, very tidy today, and it was much less, it was much shorter than yesterday, so I'm very pleased. Nicely done. You did very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Law, do you have any comments about the legislative review?
I had sent everybody a summary of the many legislative actions, as best we can tell. There's two or three things that I think are important. One, the performance funding did get funded at 30 million bucks. We haven't seen the details on what the metrics will be, or changing metrics, or any of that. We don't know exactly how that's going to unfold. It's still a work in progress. The industry certifications, where we have done quite well, is funded at $10 million. We put in $150,000. In the past, we've gotten closer to $300,000. We continue to do quite well at that. The St. Pete Gibbs Library unfortunately is funded at $6.5 million. We have every reason to believe the remaining balance of 3.5 million will come next year. I think it is important to recognize the very good support we had from our delegation, and in particular Senator Latvala, okay? Everybody was in a tight spot. He kept us afloat so that we could keep the project moving forward. There's one more piece to do, and I suspect we'll get comfortable figuring out how that's all going to work, but he has been supportive and has indicated that we're good there. The baccalaureate caps are in at 15%. We're working on the timing of how all of that might work. We're not hitting the panic button on that yet. We think there's some flexibility in the way they calculate who's in the 15% and those kinds of things, so we're just going to hold fire on that. I don't think, I will tell you, I think we ought to keep moving forward on that, even if they don't send us the money. I don't think we're very adept at turning the knob on and off again, you know? If we turn it off, who knows how you're going to turn it back on? And I think we're better served by taking students in, even if we just collect the tuition margin and make that work until a better day comes along. So that'll be my recommendation, I think. And then the language on direct support organizations, which had us all very concerned, was kicked down the road till 2022. So five years from now, the direct support organizations have to live on their own funds in whatever form that looks like. And, you know, the university guys are very exposed on that. We were exposed for about $650,000, so that is falling to the back burner rapidly because we have some other more important things in front of us, but it's on the horizon, and it will come. I sat there the day they went through that, and quite frankly, I can tell you, the House Representatives is dead serious about making that work, so ill-advised, I think, but that's what we see. Those are the highlights or lowlights, whichever way. Oh, we created the State Board, I'm sorry, there's one other. The State Board of Community Colleges in. It starts on October 1st, I think, so the chancellor will transition over to that board. I don't think there's anything, obviously, there'll be a little more coordination, a little more focus on us, but that cuts both ways. Getting more attention is, in fact, sometimes the best legislative strategy, having somebody to speak our behalf when there's a board for the universities, a board for K-12. Although all of you have good relationships with local elected officials, in Tallahassee, you often need somebody to step to the microphone to represent the system. So I don't think that any of your responsibilities as trustees has been eroded. It's an advisory board. We took most of the control features out. We'll see how it unfolds. Mr. Chairman, I think that's the best, oh, the No Gun Bill, but that went away early in the sessions.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, approval is sought for the recommended changes to the workforce and professional development courses upon Dr. Law's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Contract between St. Petersburg College and Ed Financial Services LLC. Question for legal. This is to enter, or this is to seek to negotiate a two-year contract. We're not actually approving a contract today, correct?
I think you are approving the recommendation on the memo for the baccalaureate faculty.
Does anyone want to see the contract, or is that a subsequent action item?
The contract is not finalized.
Okay, so that'll come.
The actual item is to approve the selection.
Okay, because it says approval is sought to enter into a contract. We're negotiating a two-year contract, and then the contract will come back.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next three items are grants, contracts, Florida Department of Education, Florida Education Fund, American Association of Community Colleges. Does anyone need a presentation? We'll take all three at the same time under one motion. Do I have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Motion in a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Presidential search update. Ms. Warner.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. I am here to give you an update on our presidential search, and I'm pleased to say that we are on schedule. We have had two of our candidates, Dr. Stan Vitto and Dr. Ed Bonahue, who visit us, had campus visits, had interviews with our board. And yesterday and today, we have Dr. Tanja Williams. She is going to be completing her interview with you this evening at 4:00 PM at our St. Pete Gibbs campus at our music center. Next week, we're going to have our final two candidates who will be visiting us, Dr. James Hennington and Dr. Franklin O'Fora. We'll have a conclusion of our presidential interviews on Friday, May 26. And then the board will have a special meeting to discuss the candidates and make a final selection for the next president. That will be on Wednesday, May 31st at 9:00 AM. That will be a live-streamed video discussion and led here at our Epi Service Center. That's where we are. Everything looks on track, and that concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to offer my apologies that next Friday afternoon I won't be there. I would love Rebecca to know that I wanted to just show the video.
But she will watch the video.
I will, for sure. I will, Thursday, 31st.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the un-agended items. This is, we have some various speakers regarding the Sign Language Interpreter Program. There's no formal presentation, I assume, but we have various speakers, and I'll call them each. Up here, you have three minutes. I will keep a running clock under our policies and procedures. The total time for any agended or un-agended item is 30 minutes. We'll try to keep it below that. If you don't need your three minutes, then pass it on to the next person. The time doesn't carry, but we'd like to hear from you. Beth Carlson will be first. Anthony Verosa is next. I'm just trying to read handwriting. Beth, thank you.
Okay, thank you for allowing us to get on the agenda, and greetings to Mr. Chair, Dr. Law, and the Board of Trustees. Very quickly, as three minutes goes very, goes fast, some of you have done your homework, I take it, you've read the letters from the community, which, by the way, if everyone could just pop up, please, here, Rebecca Doherty. This is just a small facet, because of course, many people had to read. Our, the closing of our program was completely, we were unaware of anything that was happening. And while we understand some of these reasons for doing so, we have been given a short amount of time to work with what we have to do. So our program has been in existence for 25 years. We average 400 to 600 students in ASL, and a lot of them go into the Sign Language Interpreting Program. Our program's small, because it is, there are three programs in the state of Florida, but we have had a long existence of graduating students who grew right into the workforce. What we'd like is some extra time, although we realize and we're excited about having a bachelor's program for our interpreters. We need some, we have three years to do that, we have a teach-out, we would like extra time to be able to develop a nationally-recognized, high-quality program. So currently, we have three years to get the students through, and then we have to be developing a bachelor's program at the same time, and it's too much. So from our perspective, we would like a little more time. We think what's happening, we understand why. Anyway, I think probably I'm over my three minutes, am I not? Okay, thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Anthony, step up to the plate. Rosa Rodriguez is on deck.
Good morning, Chair Foster, Board of Trustees. Dr. Law, my name is Anthony Verdea. I'm a professional sign language interpreter who's been nationally-certified. I've been fortunate enough to work all over the world. I am currently also an adjunct at SPC in the Sign Language Interpreter Training Program. I feel as though one of the biggest pieces that is missing from this discussion, from this decision, is a comprehension and understanding of exactly what it is that we're doing. We are a professional of sign language interpreters. Our professional organization, the Registry of Interpreters for the Deaf, was established in 1964. Our program at SPC has been running for 25 years. Our goal is not, like some other programs, where we can come in and teach a cohort of students who will then sit down, take a test, and then will move on and actually be practitioners within that particular realm or field. What we're trying to do is not only educate the interpreter students on what it is that they need to know and understand about who they are, their own language, their own culture. We are at the same time trying to input into their understanding and comprehension what it's like to be someone who is deaf or hard of hearing, who uses American Sign Language in their daily life of communication and access. I would want to question this particular Board of Trustees to see how many of you have actually experienced working with a sign language interpreter in your law firms, in your businesses, in your brewery, as well as in the educational system. What's important to understand is that we are not here to only go out after graduation and provide service to the deaf community. Without interpreting services, you, as folks who have the ability to hear, who are also not fluent with an American Sign Language, would also not be able to communicate in the other direction. So I think sometimes it's easy to look at numbers and to lose track of the fact that every one of those numbers of a student who graduates from our program not only provide services here in the moment to the many organizations that we support while the students are in our program, but once they graduate, they are providing services and access to all of us, not only in St. Pete, but within the state of Florida, within the country of America, and if they're fortunate enough to have a career like mine, they're able to travel the world. So I'm asking that the Board of Trustees consider a paradigm shift, not only focus on numbers, but focus on the fact that as a profession of sign language interpreters, there is access being provided to each and every one of you in this room today, as well as to all those folks that we provide services to on a daily basis around the world. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Rose is up. Beth Engelman is on deck.
Good morning, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Law. My name is Rosa Rodriguez, and I am with the deaf, I'm the deaf services coordinator for the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative. Our program has been in existence for 18 years, and we rely heavily on the sign language interpreting students to help move our deaf community through the library services that we provide on this single day. I am also a member of the Sign Language Interpreting Advisory Board, and that's the reason I am here today. We had a meeting on March 30th where we discussed options for our programs, how can we do what we're doing so great? And three weeks later, there's red letters on our website saying that our program is no longer accepting students. So I'm just here wondering, what is our role as an advisory board? What is the protocol? Why were we not part of that discussion that our program is going to be terminated? I personally found out that the program is closing through a student. She sent me an email and said, what do you mean, your program is closing, and I can no longer be admitted to it? And I'm like, this got to be a mistake. So I'm here just to not only remind you that our students are serving the community, because I, for one, receive lots of benefit from the students at the college, but also as an advisory board. We have an entire community depending on this, and we just wanted to know if there's room for a discussion. Is there any input that we can provide to you as a board in making this decision? So thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Gotti is on deck.
Good morning. My name is Beth Engelman, and I am a parent of a profoundly-deaf son who attends elementary school here in Pinellas County, and I'm also the Parent Support Specialist at the Family Center on Deafness, which is a nonprofit agency here that serves over 200 deaf and hard-of-hearing clients every year in Pinellas. I, as a parent, took classes at SPC and went through all of the interpreting training program, and was fortunate enough to learn American Sign Language through SPC and the great staff here, and to meet the many students who are part of your training program. And it was key and instrumental for me to have access to communicate with my son, and in that process, and that many of your fine students. And I see them, again, in our community. They don't leave typically this area. They serve us as interns, as volunteers, as staff in our nonprofit agencies, but even more importantly, as educational interpreters in our classrooms, and as teachers, aides, and assistants. And so it's so important for us as parents to have fine, qualified interpreters, and when a program like SPC's closes, then we are losing those students in our area. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there are 500 educational interpreters working right here in the state of Florida, and we're one of the largest areas here with a large deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Almost 6,000 students are in K through 12 programs who identify as deaf or hard-of-hearing. For 15 years, the deaf and hard-of-hearing community has advocated for a state law that would raise would raise the bar for qualified educational interpreters, and Florida is only one of five states that has no standard. By expanding the program, rather than closing it here at SPC, you'd be raising the caliber even above state level and providing our students that are deaf and hard-of-hearing with qualified, quality-trained interpreters. And so, I would just encourage you to continue the program, if not actually expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Henry is on deck.
My name is Rachel Geddy. I'm a student in this current SLIP program at SPC. So I want to tell you how I got here. So I finally, about four years ago, made a decision it was time to change my life, and I wanted to listen to that little voice that said, "Maybe I should check out this interpreter thing." So I want you to understand, 14 years ago, I did what I was supposed to do. I did the high school, I went to college, I got a BA and a degree I did not understand, didn't really care about, didn't know about, but I did it. I got a career, became a wife, became a mom, got a mortgage, did all those things you're supposed to do when you're a grown-up. But then I finally decided, there's time to change, and I want to know what this interpreting thing is about. So I started asking around, and I asked local interpreters, and I asked the people in the deaf community, and everyone said SPC. This is the program that produces quality interpreters. And also, SPC is known for a college for students like me, who work full-time and have responsibilities, but are still allowed to better ourselves and to find a better education. So I came here. I've been here for four years, and I've had the amazing opportunity to work with some of the best instructors, who are not only willing to work with us one-on-one, like, I cannot tell you the amount of hours I've sat in their offices as they're guiding and advising and counseling, and showing me how to do this thing called interpreting. But they are also phenomenal interpreters, that I get to work with one-by-one with and work under and aside. And when I graduate in December, I can call them my colleagues, and that is exciting, and that doesn't happen elsewhere. And it is really only because of this program that I can say, "I know what I want to be when I grow up," because there is literally no other program that I could regionally have gotten to, worked full-time, financially afforded, and at the same time, allowed me to become an interpreter. So really, for that, I want to thank you. I want to thank this college and this board for what it has established in the last 25 years, a quality program that I want to be a part of. This program has made me a better person, and it is making me a great interpreter. And it is my hope that that legacy will continue for many more students to come.
Thank you. Sam Harris is on deck.
Good morning, Dr. Law, Chairman Foster, members of the board. I'm Mike Henry, full-time faculty here for 15 years. I've taught the American Sign Language classes on all five of the different campuses that we currently offer at here, from downtown all the way up to Tarpon Springs. When our program was established 25 years ago, we followed the very strict Registry of Interpreters for the Deaf guidelines. That resulted in a suggested class size for the advanced training classes of only eight students in a class, because of the intensity of the training. And that's really where the problem is, is our suggested class size is small out of However, in spite of that, over the last decade, we have graduated about 110 sign language interpreting graduates. That's quite in excess of our suggested class size. Our program is robust in the sense that proportional to what our design is, intentionally small, we have a large number of graduates. We appear rather small under the workforce umbrella, which arbitrarily has chosen the number of 20 graduates a year to be a valid program. The fact that we're graduating more than our suggested class size, we're actually exceeding the expectation. We have 137% more, or 137% graduates based on our suggested class size. It's a bit ironic, there'll be no budgetary advantage to St. Pete College to cutting our program. All of our faculty would remain in the sign language program, teaching classes as a foreign language equivalent. Tampa Bay area is the second-largest concentration of deaf individuals in Florida, second only to St. Augustine, the fourth-largest concentration in the nation. Our sign language interpreters facilitate communication at medical facilities, at churches, and in public education. We have over 200 deaf students in the public, Pinellas County Public Schools, over 520 deaf students in the Hillsborough County Public Schools. And one of the challenges that those administrators face every day, they can never find enough interpreters. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires equal communication access, and the school programs are always desperate for certified interpreters. I would propose that our sign language program either be pulled out from under the umbrella of the workforce program, which has the 20 graduate-per-year requirement, or be made somehow an exception to that requirement, because what St. Pete College has is really a jewel, a valuable jewel, that looks very small, but it's invaluable to both our community and to the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tara Heckman is on deck.
Hello, Board of Trustees, Dr. Law. My name is Sam Harris, faculty at Sign Language Interpreting Program since 2014. I want to thank the community for coming to support, and that includes deaf people, family members, advocates from different organizations who have taken their time to come here. I appreciate that. I want to discuss something about transparency that seems to have been gone missing with the closing of this program. I think that's a big concern to me, a lack of transparency, and I would like to compare it to HEC. They have faculty members who have discussed with me their transition program, their interpreting program to their deaf studies program. They had originally 175 students in their program, and since they've done their transition from the spring to the fall, they've lost 100 students in that program. They're down to 75. They've lost over half of their students, and that scares me, and I don't want the same thing to happen to us here. We have about 600 to 700 students, and there is no clear transition plan for them, and how that will impact them. And I do not want us to risk losing that same number of students, that same percentage of students, without a clear transition plan. Talking about recruiting, we send many of our students to interpreting programs, and they become ASL interpreters. We might lose a large percentage of them, 300 of them, and that will affect our revenue if we cut this program, and I ask the board to consider those comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Holly Tempe is on deck. Tara Heckman, you still here? No Tara. Holly. Holly's coming up. Ellen Hummelsley is on deck.
Good morning. My name is Holly Tempe. I live in Margot, Florida. Wanted to obviously address the SLIP program closure, of which I am a proud graduate of the class of 2013. I am also a nationally-certified interpreter, which would not have been possible without the Sign Language Interpreting Program at SPC. I find myself in the rare position of being, having been a student at SPC back when it was SPJC at the inception of the interpreter training program roughly 25 years ago, when I began the program. I did not know that interpreting was a career at all. One of the things that SPC addresses in its vision statement is promoting student success in its mission statement, excuse me, through self-discovery. Something that was afforded to me at the beginning of the Sign Language Interpreting Program at SPC was the concept of self-discovery as an interpreter. Being able to take sign language classes as a foreign language and then see that a career was possible out of that foreign language, out of my passion for communication and providing equal access to everyone, making sure that everyone is on the same page and understands clearly what's happening in the room. That was something I didn't even know was a possibility. Life changes happen, things occur. I transferred out of St. Petersburg College for multiple reasons, and left my dreams of being an interpreter behind, doing what I was supposed to do. And then, as I said, life happens, things change, and it occurred to me that perhaps I should go back and do what I wanted to do, what I felt called to do, and become an interpreter. And there was no place that I considered, the very few programs there are in the state of Florida. There was no place that I considered before I considered SPC as the program. Because of the quality of the interpreters, the quality of the instruction that we receive, the support that we receive, the community engagement which is critical for developing quality interpreters, qualified interpreters, there was no place else I could have received the education that I received. When I graduated from SPC in 2013, I graduated with a job in hand, partially because of, primarily because of, the support I received from the instructors, because of community involvement and engagement, which is, in some cases mandated by the program, and in all cases, highly encouraged. The deaf community in Tampa Bay is very receptive to student engagement, and that, again, is critical for language acquisition, which is something that we require to do what we Upon graduation, I was fortunate to transfer to University of North Florida, which does have a partnership agreement with St. Petersburg. I don't know if it's a formalized agreement or not, but it's considered a two-and-two program. We do our first two years at St. Petersburg College, we go off for our second two years at University of North Florida. It's an online program, hybrid program, that's offered. We go up to campus once a month. Was fortunate to graduate from that program in April of last year with my bachelor's degree, which is required for national certification. I was also fortunate to have been a graduate of SPC both as an AA degree and as a SLIP AS degree, because that afforded me the opportunity to sit for my national certification shortly before I graduated with my bachelor's degree, and shortly before the national certification was put on hold last year. What I'm saying is, this program made possible an entire career and lifestyle that would not have been available to me otherwise. Not only due to expense, but due to scheduling, and as Rachel mentioned, adult commitments, these are things that are so critical. And as Mr. Henry mentioned, Tampa Bay is the fourth-largest community of deaf and hard-of-hearing people in the country. The last thing we need to be doing is shutting down interpreter training programs. We need more of them. We need to expand them. We need to create, if at all possible, a four-year degree here. Right now, in the state of Florida, there are three four-year degree programs in interpreting. One is in Jacksonville, one is at USF, and one is in Orlando, focused on performance We have a primary need here to continue this program and expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, Ellen, no, Ellen, Chelsea Overly. Okay. Last call for Chelsea Overly Carvallo. Okay. That concludes the blue cards. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I would just reiterate, Mr. Chair, that, you know, let Dr. Law work with these folks and see if what we can figure out. I know he had, and he'd already expressed some suggestions to me that we could figure out, so.
Okay. We'll get a report on this at our next meeting, and we'll get a report from Dr. Cooper, and we'll address this as a board, so it will be open and transparent. That certainly is something that we desire. Anything from the board for the good of the community, there being nothing. We will reconvene this afternoon at 4:00 for a board interview. The next regularly-scheduled board meeting is June 20th, 2017, here at the EpiCenter. This meeting is adjourned.